Mr. Councilman Wisworth, would you do the pleasure of the allegiance? You're muted. Okay.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty for justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth.
All right. So, good evening, honorable city council members. To our elected officials, our Mayor Burcroft and our city treasurer Stacy Page, to our deputy clerk, our administrative staff and listening audience. Today is Monday, March the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the City of Romulus City Council regular meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act two fifty-four of two thousand and twenty and the remote participation in public meetings policy adopted by city council on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, resolution number twenty dash three fifty-five. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To dial in, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. Enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of this meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the city council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the pop, the public comment portion of the meeting. Mister Chair, we had roll call during our special meeting. All members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Roscoe, and we do have a quorum for this regular council meeting.
Miss Roscoe is excused.
So noted. Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, three petitioner, four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerks' report, seven treasurers' report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, twelve communication, and number thirteen adjournment. A motion has been ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdow, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two, for approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on March first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mister Chairman, I will move to approve the minutes of March the first of two thousand and twenty-one.
Support.
The motion by Mister Wisworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the regular meeting held on March first, two thousand and twenty-one at seven thirty. Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, approval of minutes from special meetings held on March first, two thousand and twenty-one at six o'clock PM to discuss the honorary street sign dedication policy and at six thirty PM to discuss the quarterly investment report.
Mister Chair, I'll make that motion that we approve the special meeting agenda, minutes held for the honorary street sign dedication policy and the quarterly investment report.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdow, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes on special meeting on March the first, two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty. That was to discuss the honorary street sign dedication policy and discuss the quarterly investment report. Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. At six forty-five, we had a study session discussing the charter amendments. And it just timed the chairperson's going to recognize Councilwoman Tally.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to make a motion and then have discussion for a memorial resolution for Oscar Curtis Hamilton, please.
You supported that, Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Mister Wisworth for memorial resolution. Discussion, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, I just want to just start off. He passed away on August thirty-first. I think it was our last council meeting, if I'm not mistaken. He was a member of my mom's church, First Baptist. He was a fireman here, beginning in January nineteen seventy-three for the City of Romulus. And so I just wanted to do a shout out to our firemen. They gave him fireman honors yesterday when I was at the viewing of, on yesterday. And just a shout out to Chief Alice David Allison, Captain John Fee, they were out there posted. And then Jeff Elvis, Elvis was out there as well, giving fireman honors. So thank you for the fire department director Kraus, for everything you guys did and pulling that to honor, honorary fireman's honor for him, for his years of service for the fire department. And he has a son who also served on the fire department as well. So thank you for your support during that time. His, the family really appreciated it, you know, because this is difficult. And while I was out there, just some of the people that came by who I saw, you know, with the pandemic, don't see a lot of folks, but some people that came by, I saw while I was there, that came and support was Mister Gordon Sylvie was out there. So I'm going to say hello to him and Parley Dupree from First Baptist, Deacon Kelly from First Baptist, Malcolm and Carmen Anderson, First Baptist. Just the people I haven't seen in a while that just came out to show their support and love. And I'm sure there were many more, but those were the ones I got to see while I was out there. So just prayers for the family during this time. And I think Councilwoman Webb is going to expound on some additional, so thank you.
Okay, Ms. Webb, I know you had mentioned you wanted to speak. Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Yes, and thank you, Councilwoman Tally. It was really a great turnout. The community, the entire community really turned out. It was nice that they did have an extended viewing because of the COVID. But it was a beautiful ceremony, but I bring you some sad news in regards to the family. Last evening, Oscar Hamilton Senior, while he lay at the, you know, we were all there and it was just so, it was, you know, this is hurtful for me. Oscar Junior's son, I meant daughter, Oscar Junior's daughter was on her way out for the viewing last evening with her twenty-one-year-old daughter, her ten-year-old son. She had a horrendous accident, a rollover. The twenty-one-year-old daughter was killed. It was, it was so much excitement that we thought it was the ten-year-old. But no, it was Somalia, the twenty-one-year-old great-granddaughter of Oscar Hamilton and daughter of Oscar Hamilton Junior. Bianca, the mother, is in the hospital. And it is so sad. Today, it was a joyous occasion with Mister Hamilton, but it was a sad occasion because even his son wasn't there to attend his father's funeral because he was at the hospital with his daughter and waiting to tell her that her daughter had been killed in that accident. So I just wanted to just, just pray for the entire Hamilton family. It is, it's such a sad, sad occasion.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
John, Mister Wa, oh, I'm sorry. It was Mister Wisworth and then Ms. Williams.
Um, everything that my two predecessors said I was going to repeat. And but, you know, funerals could be no more difficult or no more upsetting than that. But, you know, I worked with Oscar side by side sometimes in the airport when he was working for, for American Airlines, and I was with the Sheriff's Department. And then again, when he was with the, with the fire department, he was a good decent man. His wife was my three sons' bus drivers when they went to Merriman School. And talking about a good decent human being, he certainly was. Thank you.
Ms. Williams is requesting to speak, Mister Chair.
Yes, I would just like to add to my colleagues about Mister Hamilton. I remember him the most being the bus driver for the senior citizen. And I'm telling you, he would go out of his way to do whatever he could for the seniors of Romulus. I would like the family, if they watched this meeting, to know that we appreciate all the service that he gave to our seniors, even going overboard outside of what the senior center requested. He would go overboard for our seniors, pick up groceries and take them to them on the weeks that they didn't have scheduled to go to the store. So he was a really great man and he will definitely be missed. Thank you.
On that note, Mister Hamilton, I know I met him when I was Rotary member. We was Rotary members together years back. And he would always, we always would meet Wednesdays and have a little snack, good snack he loved to eat like I do. And like Ms. Williams said, and everyone said he's such a great person, and he will be missed. And like you say, just enjoy the moment and keep love at your agenda.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, Councilwoman Webb is requesting to speak.
Okay, Ms. Webb.
Yes, just one more thing before we close out on the Hamilton family. I was, I was going to mention, they wanted me to thank Mayor Burcroft because after walking in there and hearing the dreadful news of what happened, I was up and that proclamation, the very last paragraph, the wording was so special. And they wanted me to let Mayor Burcroft know that, and this is how they said it. That was right on time, Mayor. So thank you, and, and I appreciate being able to have presented that to the family. And that's all I have to say on this. And then, John, I have one, one more thing in regards to what the city was doing in February.
We have to vote.
Pardon me?
Only have to vote on the resolution first.
I guess you do. I'm sorry.
You wasn't getting ready to make another resolution?
No, 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 no. You know what? I'm not, I'm not together, too together this evening.
Oh, you're okay. You're okay. Okay. Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Now, Ms. Webb.
Now, may I have the chair?
You got it.
Okay, this is coming from Mary Drewer, from the Economic Development Department. Just to announce to the public that the city had several entrances for the, the contest hosted in February. The Snowflake Scavenger Hunt prizes were sponsored by the Romulus DDA, Library and Recreation, as well as Wings Financial. Each winter, winner, I'm sorry, received a bag of Family Fun Games and activities valued at a hundred dollars. And the winners were Brienne Lee Marcel, Leila Johnson, and Nick Beatty. The Shop Local Contest gift card was sponsored by a City of Romulus employee. And the winner was Denver Prophet. So we appreciate everything and everyone who participated. And for the month of March, the DDA is collecting letters and cards for veterans in coordination with Hug a G I Day. And they can be dropped off to the Community Development Department.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mister Wisworth, did you have anything else to say?
Yes, I do. I guess this would be to Mayor Burcroft. Mayor, on Huron River Drive between Castle and Walnut. And if you remember about three or four years ago, we had a large branch that fell over the road. Well, there's actually three of them that.
Wait a minute, wait, Ms. Ma, I'm sorry, Mister Wisworth. I thought you had another resolution. I'm going to close my report out, and then when the mayor give his report, you can address them at those.
Okay, I'll start over. Okay, fine.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make the motion, accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, to, to accept the chairperson's report. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, city council, clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, and listening audience. I wanted to also send prayers and thoughts with the Hamilton family. Thank you, Councilwoman Webb, for taking that proclamation. Proclamations do mean a lot to families, which is the quote I brought tonight, as simple as this, family, family is not an important thing, it's everything. And I think especially when times with tragedy, I can't imagine. So my thoughts and prayers are with the Hamilton family, and thank you for that. Mister Wisworth, go fire away, and then I'll get into my two action items. Huron River Drive between the two cross streets. Is there more damage there? Well, are you, are you telling me that something fell? I'm asking, is that? Oh, no, I'm just looking, Mayor, if you look, there's three large branches that go directly over the road. And they got to be, you know, they're part of these three big trees. And these three trees don't look very good to me. And the people that live there are concerned. If one of those ever break and fall on a car, somebody would die. Okay, we'll check it out. Okay, fine. Okay, thank you for bringing it up. Appreciate it. A couple of quick action items. City council, the first one that's before you is a recommendation from Steve Hitchcock, our city attorney. This one is to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached Flexible Benefit Spending Plan Amendment. This is necessary to comply with the COVID relief bill.
Do the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make the motion to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached Flexible Benefit Spending Plan Amendment One. And I have discussion.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally. This is to concur with the administration and grant authority, authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached Flexible Benefit Spending Plan Amendment One. Discussion, Ms. Webb.
Yes, I would just like to say, I'd like to thank the administration for this amendment. I, it's been a while since I have been employed at the city. And so my daughter is an HR professional for Flint Inc., and she was over the other day, and I had her to read this, so, you know, to make sure that I understood what was going on. And she even felt that this was great because she's, she has flexible spending at her company. So after we went over it and she sort of laid it down to me, this is fantastic for the employees, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. The last item I have is a budget amendment request. This is a request to concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen. And this is to purchase an EMS rescue vehicle.
The chair?
The chair?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Ms. Abdow?
Ms. Abdow?
The chair, I'd like to make a motion, we concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen to purchase an EMS rescue vehicle.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdow, supported by Mister Wisworth, to concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen to purchase an EMS rescue vehicle. Discussion.
Yes.
Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would just like to thank the fire chief, Kevin, for giving me a call and explaining of why we, the city was purchasing this vehicle and where the funds were coming from. So I would just like to make note that he did contact me and explain what this was all about, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing non, roll call vote. Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mister Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. That takes us to number six, the clerks' report. I have one action item. And so this is a study session and public hearing request. Our finance director, Maria Ferris, is requesting one-hour study sessions for Monday, April the fifth, and Monday, April the twelfth, and for the purpose of, to discuss the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two city budgets. Also included in those study sessions, so they will start at six o'clock. And then at six thirty, on April fifth, there will be a discussion of the thirty-fourth District Court budget on April the twelfth at six thirty. Will the Romulus Municipal Library will be discussed. And a public hearing also requested for May third at six thirty PM. And again, these study sessions and, and public hearing are to discuss the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budgets.
Thank you.
Do the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion for study sessions request.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, and this is request for study sessions and public hearing. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Yep.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I support it, but I also just want to make sure that the message get to the court, to make sure that they give us a more detailed presentation, more than it has been in the last two years.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Williams? Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you, council. Before I close my report, I have an announcement with regards to our Romulus Memorial Cemetery. And as we know, last week was Ms. Jan Lemon's birthday, so I hope you all were able to call and wish her happy birthday. But this is a reminder for City of Romulus residents with regards to the cleanup of our cemetery. A notice has gone out. We posted it on our website and on our, as well as our social media page to make this announcement. The announcement goes as follows. It's a public notice. The City of Romulus will be conducting its annual spring cleaning of the Romulus Memorial Cemetery. Please review the following rules and regulations if you have any questions as to which items are prohibited. So per the rules and regulations of the Romulus Memorial Cemetery, all floral arrangements, which include reeds and grave blankets, must be removed or that will be discarded. Both fresh and or artificial flowers must be in an unbreakable vase. Prohibited items placed or left upon grave sites will be removed and stored for sixty days and will be disposed of if not claimed by the heirs of those buried at the grave site. Prohibited items include the following: holiday decorations, yard ornaments, wind chimes, lanterns, solar lights, and shepherd hooks. Picket fences, decorative rocks, trees, shrubbery, and vegetable planting are prohibited. As always, the City of Romulus is not responsible for securing items left in the cemetery, including those that are in compliance. Items placed in cemetery, in the cemetery are left at one's own risk. So the cleanup will begin, or has already begun, from our DPW workers, and it's going to go on through the whole month of March so that the cemetery is ready and looking nice by Palm Sunday. And again, if there's some items out there, I'm encouraging everybody, especially those precious items that, that are left on the headstone, we want you to please go and collect those items so that they're not destroyed or lost. If you have some questions, please call our office at seven three four nine four two seven five four zero and ask for Sean. And again, this information will be on our city website as well as our, as well as our Facebook page. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk.
You're welcome. Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, clerk, deputy clerk, and listening audience. I do not have anything to report today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. That takes us to number eight, public comment. And this is the portion of our agenda for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined this meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. And after you've been acknowledged, to tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself. If you've dialed in, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to unmute yourself. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. After you've been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. And again, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the agenda. We do have one raised hand, and that is coming from Gina Stewart. Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
All right. All right, good evening. This is going to be quick. I've been attending the meetings lately, and I noticed that on a petitioner number three, I haven't heard anything on it. You just pass by that every time. Can you tell me what the petitioner line item is for and, and what does it entail? That's, that's my only question for tonight, Gina Wilson Stewart.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay.
Just make sure I'm perusing through. I haven't missed anybody. I don't think so. I think we're. Nope.
Okay.
There's, no, no other hands raised.
We'll close that part out.
Thank you. Number nine is unfinished business. Mister Chair, I can answer that question.
Okay.
Petitioners, and it's really for items that are individuals that come before council that's asking for council to take action. They're coming, it's not for public comment or anything, it's just for, you, you'll. They're coming, it's not for public comment or anything, it's just for, you, you'll have like, um, we'll have zoning amendments or petitioners, um, rezoning and different things. We'll have petitioners that will come and present before council because they're asking council to take action. They're petitioning the council to take action. Sometimes we have those that may come for road closures. You know, um, we have conditional rezoning and different things of that nature. But again, it's, it's set aside for individuals or, um, matters that, um, come before council to take action. And I hope that that answered that question for you. Um, with that, we will move on, uh, to, if there's no more unfinished business from anyone. Uh, number ten is new business.
John?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wattsworth?
If I can, uh, this is for Mayor Burcroft. Um, I seen recently some, um, documentation that, um, it's the animal shelter got a grant of, of forty-five-hundred dollars. And I don't know who did it in the city, but, uh, I want to thank him, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll pass that on. That came from a group effort. As you know, we've been looking at all, uh, opportunities and see which ones fit. Kevin Kraus, our director, has been overseeing that with Jill Martin. But we get feedback from a lot of different departments, and it's kind of all hot, hands on deck. And, uh, we've, we've benefited greatly from it, so thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, Chetel. Thank you.
Is there any more new business from Council? All right, that takes us to number eleven, warrant, and for approval is warrant twenty-one dash five.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant twenty-one dash five in the following amounts. General fund, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars and forty cents. Major street fund, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Local street fund, three thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Public safety fund, thirty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Cable TV, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and two cents. Street lighting fund, fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Nine-one-one Service Fund, ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. NARC Forfeiture State, one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Library Fund, nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. DDA, two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Tifa District Two, one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Water and sewer, sewer fund, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Motor vehicle, thirteen thousand, fifty-four dollars, sixty-three cents. Technology Services, two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents. Revolving Fund, four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Current tax, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Payroll Tax, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Totalling all funds, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight dollars and twenty cents.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally to pay warrant number twenty-one dash five for seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight dollars and twenty cents. A discussion. Hearing none?
Yes. Yes, John.
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Williams.
Okay.
I can't hear, you can't hear me. Now I can hear you. You are faded out again.
Can you hear me now?
Now, okay.
Now you can?
Yep.
Okay, I'm, the city gas bill is, um, for the month of January. It says thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, eleven cents. Is that for all the buildings? Because I remember several months ago, it was like, one of the bills, it might have been the utility bill, was like over ten thousand. And I asked that it be broken down so I can be aware of, because I know this is just not one bill. And, and that's what I'm saying. So, you know, it would, it would actually help me out if, if it was broke down to what buildings was being charged what. Cause it could be a savings if, say if a building was costing us three thousand dollars a month or six thousand dollars a month, and that wasn't the normal bill, then maybe they would have to start cutting back. But this thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eleven cent need to, uh, be broke down.
Any other questions? Ms. Wa- uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number twelve is communication.
Yeah, to the chair.
Yeah, Ms. Tally.
I'm just gonna make this quick. I just want to thank Councilwoman Webb for sharing that hard information for the Hamilton family. I'm a strong, I stand in agreement with you and prayer for that family. Um, that's just really difficult, I believe, in the power of prayer, um, particularly in difficult situations. So just prayers up for that, the family, um, um, it's enough with Mr. Hamilton now, we're talking about a granddaughter. So just, I'm in agreement with prayers with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Any other communications?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to, I've been getting a lot of calls, and I shared it with, uh, the mayor and also Kevin, the Fire Chief. One thing I can appreciate that the City of Romulus did, they followed the guidelines of, uh, Wayne County by opening up the, um, the Vaxline shots to anyone in Wayne County. Following Romulus, since they were the first one, the rest of the communities refused to do that because we had a lot of, I had a lot of Romulus residents call to other cities trying to get on their list, and they refused to let them get on the list. So I wanted to say thank you, uh, to, uh, the Mayor's Chief of Staff and also, uh, our Fire Chief for following directions, even though it, it caused a lot of confusion. But also, uh, Julie and, uh, Kevin is working with the community, and I'm saying this because I'm getting so many calls. Is working with the community to try to do their best to get those that was, uh, not allowed to go to other cities once they receive the Vaxline shots. Um, they're trying to get them on, on a list at, to Wayne County, um, as soon as possible. So I just wanted to put that out there. And also, if, uh, the mayor could post on our city website, we are still at the high school Forgotten Harvest from twelve to three. Anyone, um, you don't have to be a Romulus resident, so we want to make sure that we take care of our Romulus residents. So all you need is, uh, your name, how many in the family, and, uh, your address. And, uh, we'll load you up with food. So every Tuesday at the Romulus High School until further notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more, uh, communication from Council? If not, that takes us to number thirteen, adjourn, adjournment, and the time is eight oh eight.
Almost.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wattsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo for adjournment. Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a great evening.